We have been vacationed by Secretary Robert Reed, Pledge of Allegiance, and Rob Crawford.
Let us bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, as we gather during this special time of the year to celebrate the son of our, the birthday of your son and our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We ask that your peace be in our hearts, your grace be in our words, your love be in our hands, and your joy be in our souls. May your love surround us, Father. Your Spirit guide us, your voice cheer us, your peace calm us, your shield protect us, your wisdom arm us wherever you may lead us through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Rob Crawford, thank you.
President Barti.
Here.
Vice President Frank.
Present.
Secretary Reed.
Here.
Trustee Ambrose.
Present.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Lofton.
Present.
Let the record reflect that we do have a call today to conduct today's business.
Mission statement. Our mission at the Florida Institute of Public Education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. Closed meeting. Under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.074, the Board will meet in closed meeting to consult with attorneys regarding pending or contemplated litigations, including settlement offers and other legal matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rule of professional conduct of the State Board of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. Consider personnel recommendation, Texas Government Code 551.074, as well, consider an appropriate approval to approve the employment of teachers, consider the proposed suspension without pay of a contract employee, consider superintendent recommendation for the proposed termination of a contract employee, consider superintendent's evaluation and related issues. You are dismissed. We will come back to open meeting at 7:00 PM.
We will open up with public participation. At this time, we have Mr. Brad Richards.
Microphone.
Mr. Richards, you have three days.
Oh, it's more than two. Thought it was two, but up to back to three. It used to be five. Anyway, good evening. All right, my topic today is going to be Psalm 83. I don't know if you guys remember Psalm 83. That's where the author talks about enemies of the enemy ones conspiring to harm them. He specifically mentions Edomites and Ishmaelites. And with that being said, I'd like to know who gave you guys the authority to use the district's logo here with these wicked people that motive? I mean, I don't understand if you guys realize what they've been doing in this community for the past forty or so years, dumping toxic waste in the city and purposely not hiring people in the city. I know you guys realize that poverty and ignorance go hand in hand. I mean, the city's got one of the highest unemployment rates in the state, and U.S. test scores, like, still bottom few test scores last hour. Look, it's no coincidence. These guys made $100,000 level billion dollars. Like, shit's went out. They made more money than any other company on the planet. You guys allowing him to use your logo to promote this nonsense right here? I mean, you guys supposed to be educated, right? Christmas is not nowhere in the Bible. That's a pagan holiday. You know, your holiday child was not born on December 24th. That's a memorized stuff. Go back and look if you don't believe me. And other than that, you got this wicked Edomite, Woodrow Wilson up here. He hated black folks. I mean, y'all probably know this. So what I'm telling you is, why would you guys want to associate your district logo with these guys? I don't understand. And so hopefully, whenever you guys do this again, whenever you decide to use your logo, make sure you figure out what's going to be put on it. Because these guys, all they did was use you, basically. These guys got a journey coming, if you believe their Bible in your house. Because they've been very wicked in the city. So basically, that's all I'm saying. Next time you decide to use your logo, make sure you study what is going on. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Richards.
At this time, we will turn it over to our attorney, Mrs. Carrick.
Yes, sir. You've got four public participation speakers, is my understanding, if they're wanting to talk about personal issue, and those will have to be handled in the one at a time in an executive session.
At this time, we have standard court by Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President. As we move through the lines of communication, I'm going to ask Mrs. Londo to give an update on our benefits. We're going to change, upgrade our benefits for our employees a bit during January, so I'm going to ask her to give us some.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Report, President and Board members, good evening and happy holidays to you. As you may recall, our employees have two open enrollment periods. We do a summer open enrollment period for our medical, dental, FSA and HSA and the dependent care coverage. Then in January, we have a period of time for open enrollment when we do supplemental, thank you, when we do, when we do our supplemental insurance benefits. So that time is upon us, and we are excited about the fact that we have worked with our TPA, Willis Tower Watson, and also with our system administrator, Highlander, the Highlander Group, to negotiate a number of new benefits and to improve our current benefits. New benefits being offered for the first time will include critical illness for our employees and also hospital indemnity. Both of those insurances will provide lump sums for certain illnesses. So our employees who take that coverage will have an opportunity to get a lump sum benefit for, with critical illness, things like heart attack, stroke, cancer, major organ failure. And then with the hospital indemnity, they would collect a certain amount of money each time they are hospitalized. So those are the two new benefits we are offering. We are changing carriers on a number of our other benefits, and as a result of that, we are going to see some minor rated decreases, but decreases, no doubt, so that would save our employees money. On the dental, we're going from MetLife to Unum. On the vision, we're going from Superior to Unum. And on basic life and voluntary life, we are changing carriers there as well, from MetLife to Unum. The district pay life insurance is going to increase from $20,000 to $25,000 for all employees, and there's no cost to the employee for that. We also have carved out our accidental death and dismemberment benefits, so that it was previously offered in conjunction with the voluntary life, but at this point, our employees can take that accidental death and dismemberment insurance on their own. We will continue to have our whole life insurance and disability insurance. The disability carrier is going to change to Unum. With the fact that we are using Unum quite a bit for a number of our benefits, we've received some deductions in costs, as I mentioned earlier. So we are going to be having open enrollment meetings in January, where our system administrator, Highlander Group, will be going out with us to meet on each campus location and with varying departments to educate our employees about the choices they will have to make. Our benefits, the supplemental benefits are effective March the 1st, and so during the entire month of January, employees have a right to make any new selections or change any benefits they wish to do so. We also are very excited about the fact that we are going to host a benefits, employee benefits fair on January 15th from 3:00 to 7:00 here in our administration building. During that time, we'll have a large number of vendors here who will provide prizes and opportunities for folks to win things and learn more about their benefits, all in a very fun environment. So we're excited about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson.
With the change in the benefits, is this going to affect our bottom line, just what we pay out for the district now? As I considered earlier?
Yes, ma'am. On a few of the benefits, we have some rate decreases.
Some rate decreases?
All rate decreases or things remaining the same. No increases, thank goodness.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we are, as we move closer to the completion of the bond, we're building new schools and renovating others, we're going to have to balance and rezone to make sure that we're possibly able to elementary at least 600 students at each of the schools. Our IT department has been working on that for a couple of years as we continued with the bond process. I'm going to ask Mr. Jackson to come forward and give a presentation on how we are moving forward with the rezoning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like Dr. Porter said, for the past couple of years, we've been working to, with a company called, I can't remember the name of it right now, but we've been working with a company to determine, we work with different parts of the city to determine what our boundaries could look like to try to balance the schools. So we started working for rezoning of school boundaries to balance it out with the 600 students that Dr. Porter, our primary person was to balance the number of students based on enrollment. We selected a vendor and we collected data from different locations for us, the GIS department, the boundaries we currently have in our enrollment currently. We looked at our enrollment over the past few years and what our future enrollment looks like, so that we can try to shift things around. We have population shifts where people are moving out, like the parks on the west side closed down, people moved out to the north side of Port Arthur, so we have some balancing to do with those type of changes in the city. What we, our concerns were, was when we were making these decisions, we looked at transportation for safety and crossing many streets and how students' travel time would change and how school time, if they would have to change, and we looked at all those type of things. We looked at maybe community-wide concerns and how can we, how would it impact the community and how can we limit that type of concerns, impact the students and staff, or is disrupting the teacher and student relationship that they have on the campus, because it may require some students who may be attending one campus to start going to another campus. We, so we looked at the viability of taking into account the projected enrollment for at least three to five years, so we can see what kind of changes are going, and we did see that we will see an enrollment increase as long as students keep coming into Port Arthur, so we're looking at some increases too. So the number of district transfers, which are internal transfers, we have students because of certain reason, maybe they're, we've got a multilingual program at this school but not at that school, so they have to do it in a district transfer to be able to attend that particular school, so we looked at those numbers also to determine what our counts could look like for us during enrollment changes. So when we did our analysis, we looked at the 911 points of street center lines, we looked at three years of teen snapshot data, we looked at the Justin County GIS data, and our current boundary of school information, for us like, where our boundaries kind of, how many students can be in these campuses. We were looking at, when we ran this report, this was our current enrollment on our campuses, and as you can see, we have some campuses that are pretty hot. When you look at Sam Houston and Lakeview, you know, Sam Houston, 663 students, Lakeview, 733, and we look at Terrell, about 794 students, but then we look at places like Adams at 553, and when we look at the Queen, there's a three to five, I mean, third grade to fifth grade, so that's why that number looks the way it looks, because it kind of combines with the Washington Elementary. So we really looking, trying to get some more students in that area too. And then we also looked at the middle schools, where we got Lincoln with 707 and Jefferson with Middle School with 960. We're trying to make sure we can try to balance that out to get around the 800 mark if possible, but that's a tough call right there. All right. So this here is what we're looking at changing our school boundaries to. The blue lines going around is our current boundaries. And so with the colors that you see will be the boundaries we're looking at making the changes to, and when you look at it, the major changes would probably be in the Terrell school zone, you're looking at extended Sam Houston school zone from Ninth Avenue, where the blue line is, over to Lombardi, that's where that railroad track rides across. And then we also looking at taking some of the homes north of 39th at Lombardi to Adams, to get Adams and students to take some of those 794 students from Terrell and bring some over to Sam Houston. And then we also looking at down here in the southern part of their boundaries, near Gulf Way up to 25th Street, moving those students to the Queen to try to increase the Queen numbers and balance it out with, because of the students that's coming to Terrell from this particular zone east of Ninth Avenue, and we get a better balanced number. And if you look at the map, I hope you can see it, we're looking at a prediction for, we're really looking at the K to five, because a lot of the pre-K students are getting counted in the areas, but they are actually maybe at weekly. So we didn't really pay a whole lot of attention to the pre-K, because a lot of those students, because they pre-K, they may be at weekly, so we don't, we just looked at the kindergarten through fifth grade. And so we're looking at maybe Houston going down to 543 students, and Terrell going from 794 students to 581 students, if everything works out the way the students are moving around. And we looking at, and we're also looking at the Travis area, where we'll take some of the students that's currently going to Adams up in this area near TJ and move within the Travis, but we're also looking at bringing over the boundary here for Lakeview, and taking some of those students and sending them to Travis and some to Lakeview to split that a little bit better, because this used to go all the way down for Travis, so we want to bring these students into Lakeview, and that helped balance those numbers out to where we're looking at 573 possibly at Lakeview and 550 at Travis. So you can see, we're getting, keeping the students in the 500 ranges, and the students here in Travis, I mean, Adams are 520. We got Fort Acres, that's still a tough area to really get through, but we do have some apartments coming up in there and still got some moving around, and so there may be more students coming out into that area, so we wanted to save a little space for them to move into that area, and we actually have a cushion, I call it. So the impact we see is that Sam Houston enrollment should decrease about 50 students, Terrell Elementary enrollment should decrease about 150 students, and Lakeview Elementary enrollment would decrease about 100 students. So when we decrease those students, that brings our school balance, starts to balance out to the numbers that I showed you earlier. Then we looked at the middle schools. That, we wanted to try to get the middle schools to balance out, because we know the majority of our students were going to TJ, so we looked at, how can we get those to balance out? So then we took the same railroad track and went up everything west of the railroad track on Lombardi up to 39th Street, and then went all the way east on 39th Street to our boundary and everything north of that. That's really the biggest, the only change that was made, to grab some students to move them to Lincoln to balance, to get some out of TJ to balance Lincoln and TJ, and when you look at those numbers, can't really see them from here, but it's like 900 in Southern at TJ, and I can't really read that number.
If you can read.
960, something, yeah, I know, something like that, yeah. So it's sort of balanced out a little bit better, and we looked at those numbers, the first effect that they have, Lincoln and Jefferson schools will have more balanced enrollment, because we're looking at 980 something students, 960 something students.
Pardon the interruption, Mr. Jackson. How many did you say would leave out to?
I'm sorry?
How many did you say would leave out to?
It'll be about nine, it'll be about 980 something students at TJ and 960 something at Lincoln, if the students don't, without transfers and things like that.
One other question, sir. I noticed in one of your previous slides, you touched on transportation, so we are prepared to follow that?
Yes, we worked with transportation during this process, and they looked at the zoning as we went through these different, this was like our eight scenario, we had 10 different scenarios we went through, and we worked with transportation through each scenario for them to look at and see how that would affect them and they transferred the students, and this was one of the ones they also agreed that would be the easiest one for them to make changes, and if they had to make changes, it would be there. There's just certain places where they, like the students at the Queen, that's, that would have to go from between the 25th Street and Gulf Way area?
Yes.
They would have to be bused, so they would have to have a bus come pick up those students, but they would like, they can pick those students up, bring them to Queen, and then bring their students to Washington. So it's within their roles.
Okay.
And also, this year, I don't know if you've been on our website, you might have noticed, we actually have a school site locator. So the school-like site locator will affect those changes, so they actually can look and see what schools that students will be attended when we upload it for us to new boundaries, and that website is on our webpage, and so you can actually have access to the boundaries and see what school your students should go to. Any other questions?
Trustees, have you got any questions? Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Just basically a comment, because we do have some people in here. When we do this, this more helps our student-teacher ratio. It's not just about moving one student from one place to another, it's about actually helping our teachers teach more effectively, have less students in the class, so they're not kids running back.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
That concludes our reports.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Minutes. Considering if appropriate improvements of the November 14, 2019, board, I need a motion. I got a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose and second by Ms. Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent agenda. The following items, which are of a recurring nature, have been, has been consent agenda items by the board president per policy BE local. All of the items we consider agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the item's not requiring separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, I give you a few minutes to look over the consent agenda. And I'd like to call the motions for items on the consent agenda, one through 16.
Motion.
I have a motion by Secretary Reed.
Second.
Second by trustee Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel.
President Barti, I have given you the list of teachers for consideration.
President Barti, I move that we approve the employment of the teachers as far as I'm asking them out.
Considering if appropriate approve the employment of teachers, I have a motion on the floor by trustee Johnson.
Second.
Second by trustee Ambrose. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
President Barti, I am asking for the proposed suspension without pay of a contract employee.
President Barti, I move that the board propose a three-day suspension without pay of a contract employee.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Second by Secretary Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
President Barti, I am recommending for the proposed termination of a contract. We told that. All right. That concludes. Information? Information for average daily enrollment, 8,305; average daily attendance, 93.41.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Continued education credits reported for board members. It is a basic obligation and expectation of a sitting board member to complete the required board training each year. This information will be reflected in the board minutes as tier one, tier two, tier three training, and will be made available to the public. In accordance with the State Board of Education rules, each new, each new board member will receive tier one training, which includes a local district orientation and a basic orientation regarding the Texas Education Code and relevant legal obligations. All sitting board members will receive updates regarding the Texas Education Code after each session of the Texas Legislature, including each regular session and called session related to education. Tier one, the following board members have completed the required, required updated, update to the basic orientation and Texas Education Code. Deborah Ambrose, Brandon Barti, Diane Brown, Donald Frank, Laura Marie Johnson, Kenneth Lofton, Robert Reed. Tier two, the following board members have completed the required annual team building training. Deborah Ambrose, Brandon Barti, Diane Brown, Donald Frank, Laura Marie Johnson, Robert Reed. Tier three, the following board members have exceeded the required number of tier three continued education hours for the year. Deborah Ambrose, Brandon Barti, Diane Brown, Donald Frank, Laura Marie Johnson, and Robert Mrs. Ambrose, legislators, legislators update Texas Education Code, tier one hours, I hope you stood to do total numbers, okay? The total, total hours, tier three, 33.25 hours. Mrs. Ambrose. Brandon Barti, 14 hours, tier three. Diane Brown, 16.75 hours. Donald Frank, 7.25 hours, tier three. Lloyd Johnson, tier three, 18 hours. Tier one, two hours, Kenneth Lofton. Mark Porter Reed, tier three, 18 hours. And Robert Reed, tier three, 9.55, 50 hours.
Thank you, President Barti. Before we end, I would like to wish Mrs. Sandra Davis a happy birthday. She's celebrated her birthday. It's her birthday, which was at a board meeting, so that's, that was her guilt. Next, on behalf of the Port Arthur Independent School District, our board of trustees, we want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. This is our last board meeting for this year and for the decade, and then we will close. Tomorrow is the last day of school. We will reopen, we'll be back on January the 3rd, the students will return on the 6th. We want everyone to have a safe, safe, safe holiday. Make sure you bring back our children, so our parents who are there, make sure you bring our children back to us safely. Remember, they eat two meals a day, so let us know how to cook out there with you every day, breakfast and lunch, and we give them snacks, and we want them to come back with a little bit of weight on them, don't let them lose any weight while they're with you, because sometimes our parents don't cook, but oh, that's not right. Okay, Merry Christmas to you and a Happy New Year.
Dr. Porter, when we signed up, are you ROTC?
Oh, okay, yes. We had another, ROTC went through its program, which is a rigorous program. They received, one, two, three, four, five outstanding and two above average, and that is wonderful. And then in the paper today, we are highlighting one of our students, we see a large award today. And we have 139 students that are cadets, and they are magnificent, they're wonderful. To our parents to understand, we have 8,300 students that we love, they're ours, we know they're yours, but we just loaned them to you, and we're going to take care of them and make sure that they're happy and well-educated, so we will, we will be on our job. Have a happy and safe holiday season.
And on behalf of the board, we'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Stay safe, and we'd like to see you again next month. Can I call for a adjournment? Having a motion on the floor by Trustee Ambrose, and second by Trustee Brown. We are dismissed. Thank you.